Hello, my fellow Americans. This is Bill Lipinski, and next up is our cleanup hitter, Ray Hanania.
And I wish I knew more about baseball and sports, but the only sport I know is politics, Bill. I am Ray Hanania. And this is Two Guys on Politics, um, March 29, 2024, season three, episode nine for this year. Um, we got a bunch of topics that we're gonna try to go through. The passing of Senator Joseph Lieberman is one topic. The never-ending election counts. You know, we're still trying to figure out who's gonna be the state's attorney, although I think maybe we might be getting close. But it's been two weeks. The, uh, Robert F. Kennedy Jr. Um, has, uh, finally announced his, uh, candidate for vice president, Nicole Shanahan, not somebody that we, that it was kind of a surprise name. And then finally, it looks like there's this growing fight in the Chicago City Council, Council Wars Two. So let's start with Joe Lieberman. You knew him really well, right, Bill?
Yes, I knew him very, very well. He was one of the finest, uh, men I've ever met in my entire life. Uh, he was a centrist. He was the type of person that we would like to have in the US Senate and in the House of Representatives, and I think he would have made a very good president also. Uh, I campaigned with him when he ran for vice president, and Al Gore ran for, uh, president. In fact, uh, we did a little tour of, uh, Illinois campaigning. We were a couple of stops in Chicago, Springfield, uh, Decatur, and, uh, let's see, uh, what's Carbondale? Uh, flew around the state in a helicopter. First time I was ever in a helicopter. I think it was the last time also. Uh, but he passed away. He was the, uh, chairman of No Labels, and he would have been the perfect candidate to be the presidential candidate of No Labels, uh, because of his centrist position. On domestic issues, he was primarily a Democrat. On foreign policy issues, he was primarily a Republican. And one of the most remarkable things about him is that he offended members of the Democratic Party in Connecticut so much that they dumped him. After three terms as their senator, they dumped him for a different candidate. But he turned around, ran as an independent, and won his senate seat once again. Uh, he was a very strong advocate for, uh, Israel, as he had a right to be. Uh, I have to say that some of his pronouncements recently in regards to that situation, I thought were very strong, and I I don't think he really understood the, all the sensitivities that exist in this country today, uh, to the situation that's going on in Israel and in Gaza. But, uh, I can understand him being that way. He was the first person of Jewish faith to run for vice president. He actually tried to run for president also. Uh, I worked with him on that campaign. Uh, but because he supported the war in Afghanistan, and he supported the war in Iraq, there simply were not enough Democrats at that time that were interested in supporting a candidate for president for those, you know, who had supported those wars. But Joe was a great American, a great patriot. Probably the thing I liked most about him was that when he, uh, would talk, he'd always talk about God, he'd always talk about faith. And I think that that is something that we really need more of in this country. So that's my feelings about Joe, uh, Lieberman. I'm sorry to see him go. I think it'll also hurt the cause with No Labels, because they've been very, having a very hard time finding a candidate. And with Joe's passing, I don't think it's gonna help him any in finding a candidate.
Yeah, I, and, and of course, I knew Joe. I think I met him once when he came, I don't know, I think he came to Chicago years ago. I can't remember exactly what it was. Um, you know, obviously, it's always sad when somebody passes. You set aside politics. I had differences with him, obviously. Part of it had to do with, uh, his position on Israel, but, you know, I, I served during the Vietnam War and I, and to me, um, one of the only things that really, that I first got to know him was when I was looking at uh, elected officials who avoided service, and he was one of those because he took a deferment um, during the Vietnam War and didn't serve. Um, unlike, uh, what was, uh, the former Secretary of State who, uh, served, Kerry, John Kerry.
John Kerry.
Yeah, and so I always was a little wary of him because of that, because it was too easy for people with clout during the Vietnam War, you know, to avoid service. So, you know, I enlisted. I went to an F-111-based active duty during the war. Um, but they never sent me overseas, but we were supposed to go overseas, but it wasn't my choice, but I was ready to go if they were gonna send me. Um, but I did my duty. So I had a little difference of opinion. That doesn't mean that he was a bad person. I'm just, you know, that I disagreed with him on some political things.
Well, I disagreed with him on a deferment also. Uh, I, I was not aware of that in his background, but that is somewhat disappointing to me, but I cannot, uh, you know, uh, negate all the positive things that he did do.
Right. Yeah, I'm sure he's, he did a lot, especially for his state, and being Jewish-American, you know, he was one of the most successful, and, and not the most successful, one of the most successful Jewish-American politicians. He, I think he ran for vice president, didn't he? Wasn't he on the vice presidential ticket?
Well, he ran with Al Gore.
Yeah, that's right.
Democrats would say, if it wasn't for the Supreme Court, he would have been vice president. I don't agree with that.
If it wasn't for those hanging chads, he would have been president.
Vice president.
And then, and then I agree with you. I mean, listen, this, uh, normally, uh, you know, because I'm Palestinian and, y- you know, and you know, my wife is Jewish. So we generally, we have some disagreements, but it's never been as bad as it has been today. And I would have thought that, you know, someone like Lieberman would have tried to look for the middle ground. But, you know, maybe in his older age, he just didn't want to do that, and he really took a very strong extreme position. But outside of all that, I always felt he was a decent person. I'm not sure he would have been a strong candidate for president, you know, with No Labels. If they had picked him, it would have been a, especially in today's world, it would have been a tou- a tough shot. Um, but yeah, it's, it's always sad when somebody goes and, and obviously, we do salute him because he did dedicate his life to the United States. And regardless of whether we agree or disagree with his policies, he was an American and he did support America. And, uh, you know, so it's kind of sad to see anybody, you know, pass like that.
An observation I would want to make is that, uh, you know, the United States and all its political leaders, uh, and it, they're, and the US citizens have always been very supportive of Israel. No matter what has come up over the course of the years, since 1948, they've been very supportive of Israel. This is really the first time that issue has come up dealing with Israel and the Arabs, the Muslims, the Palestinians, whatever you want to say, those people are, that there is definitely a difference of opinion in this country in regards to what is going on there in Israel. I think that everybody agrees what Hamas did to start this conflict, uh, was terrible. But a lot of people are beginning to think that what Israel, the Israelis are doing in regards to their search-and-destroy mission in Gaza is almost amounting to just as bad a situation. And when, when you have the President of the United States now taking such a weak position, supporting Israel, you know that times have changed. In Israel, I hope, will realize that and start conducting themselves accordingly.
Yeah, I, I, I gotta tell you that, uh, I think you hit the nail on the head. Um, to me, it's not about Israel, because I do support Israel. I do support Palestinians. I support a two-state solution. Um, I know extremists exist on both sides. Hamas is a terrorist organization. But I view, you know, Benjamin Netanyahu is with the Likud, uh, political party as being, uh, that is a terrorist organization running that country, and the, and Israel is divided. Um, just like today here in the US, uh, over Israel, it's, there is a big division because what Israel's government is doing, and I don't, I don't like to say Israel, I like to say the government, because it's government policy that I disagree with. What government policy is, I think it's wrong. Um, and there've been horrible civilian casualties that were needless. They could have done all this, but that's still a distraction from, you know, what we're doing. It, it has put Joe Biden in a very serious, you know, uh, questionable position about whether he can sustain, uh, a campaign to be reelected. I'm just not sure it's gonna happen for him. And I think this is one of those issues that, that is gonna hurt him.
Well, you, you had said that, uh, he's lost a lot of support in the Arab community in various, uh, states, and, uh, one of the last state public statements Joe Lieberman made was that, uh, President Biden has lost a lot of support in the Jewish community because of his position in regards to Gaza. So, uh, you know, it sounds like Joe was losing on both ends there.
Well, you know, President Biden seems to want to have both sides of the issue. He's trying to play to both sides, and as you know, in politics, sometimes you just can't do that. And he seems to be wanting to give a little to the Arabs, like he said, oh yeah, we vetoed the ceasefire resolution in the UN three times, but this time, we're gonna support it. And then when it goes up before the UN, he gets so much criticism from Israel that instead of voting for it, he decides to abstain. So not only does he make the Israelis upset, the very purpose of doing it was to try to win back Arabs, and it just makes them angrier. So it's just bad, I don't know where he's getting his politics from, but you did see this morning, I think, or this week, right, that, uh, former presidents Bill Clinton and Barack Obama are stepping in. They're gonna save Joe Biden, and I'm thinking, ah, I don't know. This is, that's a sign that he's in trouble, that they have to take such a public role, don't you think? Or what do you think?
No, I think that's absolutely true. And there's an old adage in, uh, politics, you know, if you stand in the middle, in the middle of the road, you're gonna get run over by both sides. And that's exactly what is happening to Joe Biden at the present time. One side is the, uh, Israeli road, the other side is the Palestinian road, and Joe's getting run over by both of them.
Yep. And then, uh, so, and then let's just stay on the political venue just a little bit longer. Um, we saw that Robert F. Kennedy, uh, finally announced his vice presidential choice. Now, I was a little surprised, uh, because I didn't know who the, who she was, Nicole. Um, I have to look at her name, Nicole Shanahan. I know she's Irish-American, but, and she's from, uh, you know, the, uh, tech industry, but I, I don't know anything about her. I was surprised because didn't he throw out two names before, that one wrestler and that one football player, that they were gonna be running mates, and then they both got trashed by the media?
Well, that, that, this, this is the all-Irish ticket, Kennedy and Shanahan.
Yeah, this Camelot to the extreme.
But that, that does have to be her, uh, marriage name, because, uh, I believe she is of some Asian descent. I don't know if it's, uh, Japanese, Chinese, uh, you know, Thai, Filipino, but she's not, uh, you know, she's not really, uh, Irish. Uh, uh, she is from, I, and I believe she, her and her, uh, mother came here.
Right, from China. Uh, her mother's from China. That's all we need, right? A Chinese, uh, uh, accent. In today's world, but, uh, but yeah, her, her background is Chinese, uh, with a strong Irish name, nice diversity, but usually, Bill, I mean, you've been in politics for a long time, and I certainly wouldn't say that I know more about politics than you, but I, I try to learn a lot and follow it, but when you're running for president, don't you pick a vice president that's gonna fill up a void that you can't, of voters that you can't appeal to and kind of balance the ticket? Isn't that what you try to do? I don't see that in this case.
Any normal candidate would do that, but you know, and I know that Robert Kennedy Jr.'s not a normal candidate.
Right.
So what he does, yeah, I don't think that this really adds, uh, anything to his possibility of, uh, being, uh, elected president. She may be an excellent vice president.
Right.
I have my doubts though, because I really believe that it, people that run for president and vice president should have some prior elected government, uh, experience. I really believe that. Uh, I've seen too many people that have, uh, Brown, when he was governor of Illinois, never had any political experience, came out of the business community, very, very wealthy man, did a great job. He was really a terrible governor. Because he, you know, he really thought that when he said something, it was gonna happen. Now, that's not the way government is.
Right.
You've got to stroke people, sometimes you gotta push them a little, sometimes you gotta give them a job or two, or help out their relatives somehow, and he would do none of that. That might work in the business world, but it doesn't work in politics.
And, and of course, there's that other TV celebrity with no political experience who became president of the United States, Donald Trump. So that didn't turn out too well either.
Oh, it did not, no.
All right, so I, listen, I think, you know, it, I, I don't understand the political strategy on his part. He's really playing that I'm an outsider too far, I think. And I don't know if that really helps him, because honestly, I don't know anything about Nicole Shanahan. It doesn't do anything for me, even though I've tried to like Kennedy. I, I may actually have an interview with him in a few weeks, um, to talk to him about, uh, hi- his running, but, um, it just seemed like the appointment didn't do anything to advance public embrace of his candidacy, other than maybe for his own existing supporters. And that's not what you do, right?
I, I, I bet that the overwhelming majority of Americans really believe she's Irish, okay?
Yeah.
You know, they see that name Shanahan, oh, he picked another, another Irish person to run with him on a ticket. And, you know, because they're not gonna bother to read about her.
Right.
They not look at a picture of her or anything like that. So they're gonna believe it's too, you know, that's why I call it the all-Irish ticket.
He, he might get the Chinese-American vote. It might help him with the Chinese-American vote, but I don't think it's gonna help in any other race. And then, uh, we have this, uh, continuing on politics, of course, it's all we have today. Uh, we got this critical race for Cook County State's Attorney between Harris and, uh, Eileen Burke. And, uh, it's been going on now, what, almost two weeks? Tuesday will be two weeks.
It'll be two, I think it'll be three weeks, won't it, Ray?
Well, is it? Oh, my gosh, I just, uh, it's like a blur. The whole point is it's dragging on too long.
It'll be three weeks next Tuesday.
My God, that's like, what happened to our election system?
The Cook County, uh, election system, I think now is being run by some banana republic in, uh, South America or Central America, because it just doesn't seem like it's very competent. Are you aware of the fact that now you can send your ballot in on Election Day, and as long as it's postmarked on Election Day, that's gonna count?
And they're depending on the US Post Office to deliver those ballots? That's part of the problem right there.
Oh, there's no question about it, sure.
The Post Office is not the same Post Office that we knew many, many years ago. Um, they're very inefficient, they're slow. Um, you know, I try not to mail anything anymore because I just, I send a bill in, and then I have somebody calling me saying, where's the payment? And I go, I mailed it like four, five weeks ago. And it just takes forever. There's no security with the Post Office. Uh, but why would they go to that, that whole mailing process now? It's, it used to be, you can get an absentee ballot if you were gonna be gone on Election Day. Now, you can get an absentee ballot because you woke up on the wrong side of the bed, and you can say, ah, I don't feel like getting up and taking, doing my patriotic duty. I'll just mail it in the lazy way. That's, or it's created all kinds of problems.
And I think another true problem is that you can now vote 30 days before Election Day. Okay, I, I think that's, you know, that's far too long a process. Now, on top of that, there are ballots that send to our many people in service around the world.
Right.
And, and as long as their ballot is postmarked, you know, by Election Day, they count. So say you're stationed at, uh, you know, someplace in Iraq, or, so, you, you would have to take your ballot, fill it out, give it to someone. They put them all in a big bag, and then they ship them to the United States, okay? And when it gets to the United States, uh, then they have to accept all of those ballots, no matter when they were filled out. I mean, it's just, you know, I think it's, it's coming close to really destroying the democratic process by having a voting system set up in this manner.
Yeah, and, and I, I'm pretty confident that, uh, um, that, uh, the, uh, Eileen O'Neill Burke, who is an appellate judge, state appellate judge, I believe she's gonna win, even though they're down to like, I think, uh, a difference of maybe 1,600 votes between them. It's like 50%, almost 50%, 50%. It's so close. Um, and, uh, Clayton Harris, I think he's the third, Clayton Harris III, um, is still trailing, even though there's so many votes out there. Um, but she's held on to that 1,600 votes. Now, I understand, and maybe you know better, but trying to do a, uh, a recount is a very expensive process.
No question.
1,600 votes is a lot. If it were even closer, it would still be very expensive.
Well, just think, you know, I don't really know if there's an automatic recount in the state of Illinois or in Cook County. Uh, some states, there's an automatic, uh, recount if it's 51-49. Here, that may not be, uh, automatic. The loser would have to request a recount. But then I believe the loser would also be responsible for paying for the expenses of that recount. And as you mentioned a few minutes ago, those recounts can get to be awfully, awfully expensive.
Yeah. Yeah, so, but I'm pretty confident fr- from what I've seen, I don't think he can pull it off. I think he's gotten as close as he's gonna get. And, uh, I, you know, again, I don't know who would be the better state's attorney. Certainly be, anybody might be better than Kim Fox. Um, because in my opinion, Kim Fox put the priority on the criminals and their rights rather than on the victims and law-abiding citizens. You change the law to say that, oh, instead of being arrested for stealing $200 or $500 in retail items, and it becomes a felony, meaning more serious charge, they raise that and say, oh, no, go ahead, you can steal up to a thousand. So there were all these stories about, uh, criminals being arrested on the border of Cook County, like in DuPage County and Will County, where they were arrested, and they said, oh yeah, I'll be out on the street. This is Cook County, right? And the DuPage, uh, County Police would say, no, you're in DuPage County, you're done. And they go right to jail. But if it were in Cook County, um, these criminals are being released. And how many stories? Every week, we see a story about a, a criminal who's been arrested, who's been charged, who's facing charges, who's out on uh, bond, or who's out on their own recognizance, and they go and they kill somebody. And they, they say, oh, the suspect was wanted, you know, that he's been facing other charges. Why aren't these people in, in jail? So I'm hoping that one of them, and I think Eileen, uh, Burke, uh, is going to, uh, ensure that that stops, but I, I don't know. It's been a, she was, she downplayed that aspect, knowing that there's such a large African-American vote in Cook County, that she didn't want to offend them too much by being too anti-Fox. But I'm hoping that deep down, she changes those policies, but I, I don't know.
She did, uh, talk a lot about crime, and crime is sort of a code, uh, I think, for being anti-Fox, uh, anti allowing people to steal up to a thousand, $1,000 without them being charged with a crime.
Yeah.
I, I, I agree with you. I believe that, uh, she's going to win because now they're counting primarily the military ballots and the ballots from Cook County, and I don't think Fox does as well in those two categories. Uh, but, you know, once that's decided, there might be a recount. And a recount, it'd probably take several weeks, maybe a month. So it's gonna be a long time perhaps before we know who the new state's attorney is going to be.
Yeah. All right, so we have no idea who the state's attorney is gonna be, and we may not know. And I think April 9th is the official, formal canvas, right, where they release the final votes, and that's still a week away. Who knows what's gonna happen there? So, um, our future, I'm still gonna be very cautious when I'm filling up my car at a gas station to be looking around to see that nobody carjacks me, because that happens too often these day in Cook County. The final topic is this, uh, you know, you and, and I covered, uh, Council Wars. You were involved in it. Then I covered it, and now it looks like there is a big war between, uh, some of, uh, Mayor Johnson's allies and some of the southwest, uh, side aldermen like Ray Lopez and Silvana Tabarez and, and a few of the others like that. I, wha- what it, what is your understanding that it, that is, is there like, uh, a specific thing that's starting it, or is there really a broader thing that's starting it?
Well, first of all, let me correct the record. I escaped to the United States Congress before the first shot was fired in Council Wars. So I was not a real participant in Council Wars. I'm certainly aware of it. I know what, and I know all the players, Eddie Brudolak, Eddie Burke, Mayor Harold Washington, but I just want the record straight. I was not.
I was just thinking more in terms, you were the Democratic committeeman.
Correct.
Of the 23rd Ward. So you did have some influence over the alder. I think it was, was it Ray Kristiniac? Was he alderman at the time?
Bill Kristiniac.
Yeah, good guy. Bill was just a great guy. And, uh, but yeah, so, but we saw what happened then. It just, uh, the city was frozen. Nothing could get done. And it looks like, uh, it seems to me that some of the aldermen are trying to do the same thing with Brandon Johnson, because he is far left, and he's the candidate of the Chicago Teachers Union. And a lot of people feel that the Chicago Teachers Union has too much influence over the city. Um, but I, I know that they brought up this one issue where they said that, uh, fellow alderman Byron Sigcho Lopez, who was one of Johnson's chief, uh, uh, supporters in the city council. Um, they said he was at a rally, which happened to be pro-Palestinian, where they burned the flag. And because he was at that rally where they burned the flag, I think Tabarez and, uh, Ray Lopez and a few others, there are, I think, five other aldermen. They're demanding that he resign from his committee position, um, that he no longer be a floor leader. Uh, but he's responded that, you know, that, there was a flag he learned of later that had been burned. And when he came, he wasn't there when that happened, but when he got there, he was where that, uh, the burning had taken place. So it seems like, on the one hand, you know, I don't know if this is being crafted to become a coun- Council War twos, two, whether this is a strategy to take out Brandon Johnson. I don't know, but I don't know if this is strong enough to start a war. What do you think, what do you, what do you think, Bill?
Well, I, I think, first of all, uh, people in this country, according to the United States Supreme Court, have a right to burn the American flag if they chose to do so. Now, I think it's reprehensible. I am definitely opposed to it. I think it's a terrible thing. That's, that's number one, but they got a right to do it if they want it. This individual here that came to speak, this alderman, he says he knew nothing about the flag burning, yet I have seen photos uh, in videos of him standing about four feet away from the remains of the American flag.
Right, right.
Had been burned. Now, I think he could have made it out that it was the American flag, and he could have said something about it, but he chose not to. But I don't think that burning the American flag, uh, is the issue. I don't think people supporting the Palestinians is the issue. I think the issue is strictly Chicago politics. Those people who are supporter of the mayor, those people who oppose the mayor, so you have the same type of breakdown that you had during Council Wars. Now, during Council Wars, the aldermen at first had the upper hand, because they had the majority of the votes in the city council. Now, from what I can see, the maximum number of votes that these people who are complaining about the burning of the flag and making that the issue, when it really isn't the issue. The real issue is strictly the opposition to the mayor and his people. There's about 15 aldermen in that category.
Right.
You gotta have 26 to get anything passed in that city council. You know, 15 is their maximum number. It's gonna be a guerrilla warfare, just like is going on at the present time in regards to this situation.
Yeah, now, some of the aldermen, just, uh, for the record, Alderman Marty Quinn from the 13th Ward, who I know and I like, he's, I like what he's done in the 13th Ward. Uh, Alderman Ray Lopez of the 15th Ward, he ran for Congress. Really, and, and a terrible campaign, and, and on the basis of a flimsy motivation, I thought that, uh, Jesus Garcia was gonna get out of office, and that, that's just ridiculous. Um, and then Silvana Tabarez, another one, who's from the 23rd Ward, your former ward, very smart person. Um, she's opposed to the mayor and this, uh, Sigcho Lopez. Bill Conway from the 34th Ward, Gilbert Villegas, who I, again, he's another alderman I've met and talked to many times and supported and donated to some of these people um, from the 36th Ward. He's with the group Anthony Napolitano from the 41st Ward. Chris Talafario Pharoah from the 29th Ward, Felix Cardona of the 31st Ward, and Nick Spasato of the 38th Ward. You're absolutely right. This is just gonna be another, uh, Larry Blum, Marty Obermann coalition with more voices in the daily administration. Remember? in the Daley administration. Remember there were like three aldermen? All the time that were up there complaining about Daley and Belandic.
Yeah, there was the guy that became a professor at the University of Illinois, Chicago, Dick Simpson.
Dick Simpson, he was one of them. So they had what, four usually? So now they've got that number up to what? You said fifteen? That's progressive. That's a, that's progress. I don't know if they want to use that word, but that's progress. But it's not enough, is it? It's not enough. But what it, and, and the, I agree with you, listen. We, we do two guys on politics. I'm very proud of the American flag. I would never burn an American flag. But at the same time, I don't think it's an issue if an American burns an American flag and protests for American policy, because you're right. The U S Constitution says we can do that. That's why we're free and we're the America. We can have our opinion to do what's right, as long as we don't hurt other people. Uh, we don't engage in hate and, you know, uh, uh, violence. Um, so I tolerate it. It's not something I would do. It just seems like a cheap issue. And if I were working with this group, I would tell them, find a significant issue that instead of pandering to the emotions of the public, hits an issue that really hits home, like crime. Address the crime issue. You want to get people on your side, address that issue with crime. You want to get people on your side, talk about how seniors are, you know, not getting the services they need. But really kind of building a campaign over the burning of an American flag. It's not, it's an emotional issue. And it just seems that they're weak, you know, and they're not strong. And I'm a little disappointed in them that they would do that. And of course, they're gonna say, well, Ray, you're Palestinian. He was a pro-Palestinian person. All those aldermen voted against the ceasefire. Um, even that, to be honest with you, to me, that's a foreign issue. Why do we even have to have that in the city council? We pass resolutions on foreign countries all the time. Get past that. Move on to something more important. Uh, but I'm a little disappointed in those, uh, in, uh, Silvana and especially Ray Lopez.
Okay.
But, but more so because of his, what I thought was a poor campaign, running for Congress.
He got beat pretty bad, didn't he?
Yes, he did. It, it was, uh, I mean, he's a good person. And, uh, and, and he, and when I first met him, he really stood up for the Arab-American community against, uh, Lori Lightfoot when she was shutting down a hundred Arab stores as her message that they're gonna crack down on street gangs. Uh, he stood up. He was one of the few. Villegas joined us. Uh, Tabarez joined us. This is ridiculous, but obviously maybe it had to do more with politics and not getting along with Lori Lightfoot when I look back on it. Um, but they completely flipped, you know, and they just won't even say anything in support of, uh, the Palestinians in Gaza who are being killed. And that's, I'm saying, you don't have to criticize Israel, but you should, like you said, I mean, you acknowledge that there's some real troubling issues. And I think that everybody is seeing that except them, and that's the thing that concerns me the most.
Listen, the most important thing Ray Lopez ever did was be a precinct captain in the twenty-third ward, regular democratic organization, when I was the committeeman. So that, I, I give him credit for that.
Well, I would call him back and make him go back to school for at least one more semester for summer school. Uh, he must have missed one of those lessons because nobody is better at teaching people about politics than you are, Bill. In all the years I've known you, you understand politics. You've always been fair and it's not a matter of whether we agree or disagree. It's about the approach to the issue has always been fair and reasoned. Um, and we may come to different conclusions, but it was never an emotional dislike, or it was more about, these are what I see, the facts, and you could always defend them, so.
Well, I always felt that you can disagree as long as you're not disagreeable.
Exactly. And I think that that's, uh, the end of the road, but we'll be keeping our eyes open then for the state's attorney's race. Um, and, uh, council war two, whether council war two burns up or actually, uh, grows in strength. It'll be interesting to see what happens with that.
Before, before we go, I want to ask you a question. Is that war between Croatia, uh, excuse me, uh, Ukraine?
Is that still going on? That, I was just gonna say, is that still going on? Nobody talks about that anymore.
Who started the newspapers?
Yeah, I, listen, that is troubling. Um, this idea that all these other things have gotten in the way of, uh, Russia's brutal invasion. We might as well just spend a couple of minutes talking about this. Somebody, some crazies, they said were with ISIS-K, um, attacked a, uh, theater in Moscow and killed, I don't know, a hundred or more people, uh, which is terrible. But for Putin to stand up and say, this is a horrible act of terrorism, when he's killing hundreds of people every week, not even face to face by lobbing missiles into civilian neighborhoods and killing civilians, he's the worst criminal I have ever seen on the international stage.
Did you ever see, uh, the photo of him in the Russian Orthodox Church kneeling down and lighting the candle?
Yes.
The massacre?
Yes, the, by the way, I'm Orthodox. The Orthodox Church is split, the Russian Orthodox Church, but I can understand how they're afraid of Putin. So they're embracing, the Russian Orthodox Church is embracing Putin. And they've given, they've done everything he wants, but the rest of the Orthodox Church will be celebrating Easter in a few weeks. By the way, happy Easter to everybody, traditional Easter. Um, the rest of the Orthodox Church is, uh, uh, against what they're doing, you know, what the Russians are doing in Ukraine.
Russian Orthodox Church has always been with the house. They were with the czar. And then somehow they wound up being able to support the communists also. And nowadays support Putin. So, uh, they're, uh, I don't know what the right word is, but, uh, I have a feeling that their, uh, support is not really genuine. It's, uh, it's only, uh,
Face saving.
Yes.
Face saving and body saving because the Russian, uh, president is, wouldn't have a second thought to throw somebody in the Gulag uh, out there in Siberia.
But it is, it is amazing how the, uh, situation in the Middle East has just almost got totally rid of this war going on between Ukraine and Russia. Disappointing.
It has an impact. It has had a terrible impact on it. And it is too bad because, uh, we cannot let Russia take over, uh, Ukraine and be victorious, even if he doesn't take over Ukraine, but declares victory. Um, he shouldn't be allowed to do that. And I certainly hope the world doesn't soften up on uh, the war crime charges that have been filed against him. Um, he should face those for the rest of his life. So, Bill, I think we made up for our week off last week, pre-Easter vacation that we had.
Yes.
So I'm Ray Hanania.
I'm Bill Lipinski, and until next time, I'm a fellow American.
All right. Bye-bye, everybody.